No wait just a moment, see if we can bring in Councilmember Crossley.
She should be coming in here.
All right, we have her. Hello. Welcome to the Maplewood City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 26, 2021, and I call this meeting to order. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which stands.
One nation.
Nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Traxler, would you please conduct roll calls? We can ascertain if we have quorum.
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Canapper.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mayor Canapper, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Item number four is not needed, and that is motion to excuse councilperson. Item number five, city attorney statement. Yes, Mayor, I would request that the minutes to this meeting reflect that pursuant to section 610.015 of the Missouri Sunshine Law. Members who are not in the council chamber can participate and vote in the proceedings this evening because we remain in an emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you. Mr. Traxler, item number six.
Approval of the city council agenda.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the council agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Traxler, item number seven.
Public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request for a conditional use permit to allow a dog groomer at 3110 Sutton Boulevard.
At this time, the audience is invited to raise their Zoom hand if you would like to give a public comment.
Mayor Canapper, I'm showing no hands.
All right, thank you. Mr. Traxler, item number eight.
Public forum.
Again, the people in attendance are invited to raise their hand, the little Zoom hand, if you would like to be called upon so you can give a comment.
Okay, Mayor Canapper, there are no hands up.
Thank you. Mr. Traxler, item number nine.
Announcements.
Um, I have a few save the date items I'd like to pass on. Uh, one of them is the Maplewood Kiwanis Annual Pancake and Sausage Breakfast. And that will be Saturday, November 13th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the VFW at 1717 South Big Bend. And proceeds will benefit the MRH School District programs. And the other save the date is, uh, seems like a long way away, but it's really not, is the December 3rd, which is the Christmas Tree Walk. And that is from 6:00 to 9:00. It's CMB Bank Park, and we have the Grand Tree lighting that will take place. Santa will be there. Live entertainment, carolers, carriage rides, complimentary refreshments, and the merchants are open, and they have their open houses all over town. So mark your calendars for that one, too. You don't want to miss that. So that's December 3rd. And that is all.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Are there any additional announcements? All right, hearing none. Mr. Traxler, item number 10.
Approval of the October 12, 2021 city council meeting minutes and closed session minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the October 12, 2021 city council meeting minutes and closed session minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Traxler, item number 11.
Library report, library report by Board President. Pripa Naya. Hope I didn't get that wrong. Sorry.
Ms. Smithia, can you hear? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, I can hear you.
Welcome and thank you for joining us this evening. I understand that you're going to give us a report.
Yes, I am. I'm really excited. The library is doing great. Over the past few months, uh, they've been focusing on diversity, community involvement, and increasing accessibility. Director Ashley Bryant chaired the committee for the library consortium's participation in Tower Grove Pride Fest. Um, and when Ashley shared her library's report with our last meeting, um, she expressed how the teenagers were really loving the she/her buttons and the they/them buttons, and they were really excited. And, um, if I don't know about LU, but when I see a teenager get excited, that really lights my fire, you know? So I think Ashley and her team are just doing wonderful things over there. So, um, also, if you haven't seen the new design of the library t-shirts, they're wonderful colors. Sophia, who's a staff, designed the t-shirts. I have a few myself, and I think they're great. When I've walked into the library, you know, there'll be a few staff members with them on, and it just makes you feel really a part of something. And I think that was a beautiful thing that, um, that staff member did. And they've been raising money for, um, the library with the proceeds, uh, for that, for that t-shirt. So, um, but getting back to the agenda, the, the purchasers about diversity, they've also been starting to use a database, um, to track diverse titles. So, um, in that way, they get to, um, a wider variety of books to, to choose to purchase, you know? So I think that's a great, um, tool that they're using. And also, the staff has made multiple displays and began promoting materials for various heritages, including Indigenous Peoples' Day, which I think that was great last, last, uh, meeting that I, that the city of Maplewood, um, made that, uh, Heritage Day of motion that we, the last meeting. Um, and also, um, in coordination with the Art Artist First, all staff is participating in Safe Zone Training. So the library will become a safe place, a welcoming place for the LGBTQ+ community. So all the staff has been, um, trained in that. Also, with, uh, community involvement, they won the Missouri Library Association's Annual Community Participation Award for working with maple good to share information on our area's resources. So that's quite a feather in their cap. And then they're also, um, working on increasing accessibility. And so they worked with ParaQuaid on a walkthrough with the library to, uh, give them an assessment on, uh, where they can improve the accessibility of the library. And, um, lastly, other news, um, we do have a vacancy on the board. Uh, one of the Board of Trustees has resigned on John Eric Hansen. He was a wonderful, um, asset to the library board. So we're really sad to see him go, but, um, would love to have, uh, that, that space filled. And then we would also like to thank, um, Jason Watkins of the Public Works Department in the city, uh, for their assistance with various, uh, projects and repairs to the building that they've helped with. So that's, that's all I have for this month, but really, every time I go into the library, I'm really energized by what they're doing. And, um, Ashley has just been the perfect person to guide us through this, um, pandemic, and she's always thinking ahead. And her team is wonderful, so I can't, uh, I can't stop talking nice about her.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate you wholeheartedly. Ashley is wonderful. Her team is wonderful. Um, and, and the work that the volunteers do, uh, on the library board, you all are appreciated just as much. So, thank you.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate it because I, you know, I've been here, third generation here in the, in the neighborhood, and I remember when the library was at City Hall. So we don't want to go back to those days.
Right. You know what? It was actually Mr. Traxler that showed me where the library was. And I was like, how did y'all fit books in there?
Yeah, right. Exactly, exactly. We gotta move forward here.
Councilmember Wood.
Oh, I would like to ask a question about the t-shirts. Sale at the library, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and what's the price of those?
Um, I think it was, um, $12 maybe. It, it was maybe $10 or $12 maybe. Yeah, it's definitely reasonable.
Certainly.
Great Christmas gifts and stuffings, uh, stocking stuffers.
We have a confirmation that in the chat that they are $12.
Oh, great.
And then I just wanted to echo the work, especially the, the teen hangouts. My, I have a teenager that loves going on Tuesdays now. Um, Tori is amazing, and she even goes other days of the week. There's a volunteer program that kids can volunteer there, and she's really enjoying that, which is amazing. So I just want to echo that they are doing a great job.
Thank, thank you. I, I agree. I, I think anytime you can get teens involved is a big, big win.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? All right. Thank you so much again for joining us.
I appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Am I the only one that lost the mayor?
Um, I, I lost her too, I think.
Oh.
It looked like her screen froze up briefly before we lost her.
Are you able to hear me and see me?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was weird. I don't know what happened.
You froze for a minute.
Well, I could see you all, and I saw Councilmember Page say, am I the only one that, that lost the mayor? And I was just like, I'm here. Stuff. All right. Uh, Mr. Traxler, item number 12.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to purchase two LifePak 15 cardiac monitors by means of the Savic Buying Group in the amount of $64,142.70.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Traxler, please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Resolution 21-46 is approved.
Thank you. Mr. Traxler, item number 14.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, to accept the bid of Traymark Contracting Inc. in the amount of $24,406.80 for street painting.
Oh, thank you, because I totally missed that. That was item number 13. Thank you. I think I said 14. Um, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Traxler, please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Resolution 21-47 is approved.
Thank you. Mr. Traxler, item number 14.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the creation of procedures for appointment to cities' boards and commissions.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, so I.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I, I have two items that I'd like to, um, have amended to the resolution. Uh, the first is item number 1F that's in the resolution. And then the other is item number 2D. Both of those discuss if someone is not appointed, then, here, I'll just read it. So this is item number 1F. After the council has made its appointments, applicants who are not chosen will be notified, will be so notified by either a member of the council or city staff at the council's discretion. I think that that should be the responsibility of the mayor. The mayor should tell the person, like, I, I didn't choose you for this appointment at this time, uh, but it may be another opportunity in the future. So 1F and 2D say that, and I, I think that those should be changed.
I'm comfortable with that.
For me. No, playing with me.
I'm good with that. So you're saying instead of council or city staff, just have mayor?
Okay. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, so then I believe we need to amend.
I, I have one comment. I just, um, in 1B, I just wanted to add to the end and make appointment recommendations to the mayor, because I think that's what we're doing there, is having our opportunity to make our recommendations. If that works.
That works.
You said 1B?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. 1B.
I'm, I'm sorry, what did you want to change?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the end and make appointment recommendations to the mayor.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Then, as you were saying, we need a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
Yes.
Second.
Uh, sorry, no, I thought we had to make a motion to amend it and then a motion to approve to amend it.
Yes.
Yeah. So a motion to amend the resolution?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
So now motion to approve the resolution as amended?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I have to do a roll call vote.
Do a roll call.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Traxler.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Resolution 21-48 is approved.
All right, thank you. Mr. Traxler, item number 15.
Bill 6175, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending chapter 38 personnel to modify Article 9 holidays to include June 19, Juneteenth, National Independence Day as a legal public holiday.
That's the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just really excited about this. I know the library recently passed this, so, um, I believe this came from me, Mr. Reese, and I, I think this is great.
This came from me, too. I want to make sure that's clear. This came from me, too. Yes, Mr. Reese and I talked about this, and, um, I was so happy, um, when, when he brought this up to me because I told him that I was already going to bring it up to him, so, yes. Um, and what I'd like to do is take a moment just to read it. Uh, whereas the city council desires to amend chapter 38 of the Maplewood City Code of Ordinances to modify an article adding Juneteenth as a legal public holiday, and whereas the city council recognizes that by declaring Juneteenth as a legal public holiday for Maplewood City employees, it will result in the closure of public offices of the city, and whereas the federal government has designated Juneteenth National Independence Day as a legal public holiday, the first new federal holiday since 1983, and whereas on June 19th, 1865, enslaved African-Americans in Galveston, Texas were told they were free, and whereas the term Juneteenth is a blend of the words, of words June and 19th, and Juneteenth National Independence Day is also called Emancipation Day, Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Black Independence Day, and Juneteenth Independence Day, as it commemorates the end of slavery in the United States, observed annually on June 19th, and whereas the city of Maplewood celebrated Juneteenth with its community members in 2021, and will plan to celebrate the holiday with residents, businesses, and guests of Maplewood each and every year going forward. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, that Juneteenth National Independence Day will be included in the list of holidays for the city of Maplewood, so. Woo, thank you, Mr. Reese.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, Mr. Traxler, second reading, please.
Bill 6175, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending chapter 38 personnel to modify Article 9 holidays to include June 19, Juneteenth, National Independence Day as a legal public holiday.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, the third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Mr. Traxler, item number 16.
Bill 6173, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending chapter 34 offenses to add a new Article 11 residential landlords' tenants.
This is the final reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Once again, I just want to thank, uh, Councilmember Schmidt and Councilmember Crossley for doing the groundwork and spearheading this. And I want to also thank Attorney Graves for working so quickly to get this created and before us, um, so it can go into effect ASAP after we voted into effect, so. All right, Mr. Traxler, roll call vote.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Bill 6173 becomes ordinance 5968.
Thank you. Mr. Traxler, item number 17.
Bill 6174, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to Margaret Squires to operate a dog grooming business at 3110 Sutton Boulevard.
Motion to table for reading of the finding of the facts.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 But is that a roll call?
No, no, that's a both. Voice vote. All right, Mr. Traxler, please read the finding of facts.
Mayor and city council make the following findings of fact for the petition for conditional use permit for a dog grooming business at 3110 Sutton Boulevard. A, the proposed use complies with all applicable provisions of the zoning code. B, the proposed use will contribute to and promote the community welfare and convenience. C, the proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of neighboring property. D, the proposed use does comply with the overall neighborhood development plan and existing zoning provisions. E, the proposed use will provide, if applicable, off-street parking and loading areas in accordance with the standards of the zoning code. F, the proposed use will not substantially increase traffic hazards. G, the proposed use will not substantially increase fire hazards. H, the proposed use will not overtax public utilities. I, the proposed use will not place an undue burden on municipal services.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the findings of fact?
Motion to approve the findings of fact.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Traxler, please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
May I have a motion to bring the bill back on the table?
Motion to bring the bill back on the table?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, then.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
This may be for, uh, Mr. Reese, I just noticed under section 2D, business operations, that it says no more than one employee can work on site at any given time. Is it that what the owner requested, or are we putting a restriction on how many employees are there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, Councilor Fockingham, I can certainly get back to you. I'm not sure about that provision.
I think that was the business plan. It's just the owner.
Okay.
And there's only one, the way I understood, there's only one family's dogs at a time as well.
Uh, it was the, it was Councilmember Schmidt's correct, and if it's okay, um, it, it's, it's, it's the site constraints of the site, Sean, there's a, there's only maybe three parking spaces there. And it's, the hours are going to be limited, and, and it was, it's completely the owner's choice for this, so we just.
I know, I, I just had overlooked it, and it looked, I've never seen a restriction on employee, and I was just like, wait a minute. Uh, only one, but you're, yeah, right, the site is not conducive to have, you know, tenant employees in there. I get it. I just wanted to clarify, that's all. Thank you.
Y'all, okay.
I just didn't want to go ahead.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the bill?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Traxler, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Bill 6174 becomes ordinance 5969.
Thank you. Uh, and I would like to personally thank Councilmember Wood for giving me a tutorial on all the steps that it takes to do a conditional use permit. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Traxler, item number 18.
Old Business, November 16, 2021 Budget Town Hall Update Agenda and Breakout Session Questions.
Okay, um, can everyone see, see the screen there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Just to kick off this, uh, update, and if there's any discussion, I made a slight change to the, uh, item number two, to include a little bit of a budget overview along with the timeline, and extended that time for our finance director to, uh, to talk about there in the item number two. And then for your review, Councilmember Crossley and I worked together to add some draft questions for the breakout session. So you'll see five questions there for you all to consider. There for you all to consider. So that's kind of the update and happy to discuss those breakout session questions or the agenda again.
Just a quick question regarding the breakout questions, are we going to be? Asking all of those questions during the breakout session or will each? I'm not sure how that's gonna function.
Yeah, Councilmember Phillips, I think that's really up for, up for debate here, up for discussion, it's, these are kind of the universe of questions that we came up with. And. You know, I don't know if Councilmember Crossick, you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, so I think what happened last time is like the group, the group that I was in, we just worked through the questions and just to see where we. Landed with like the amount of time that we had, so. This breakout session, it looks like it's twenty minutes long, in theory you could get through. Pieces of this, and I think different questions may speak to different people and different groups. So it's not so much like. A timed essay test, you have to have a complete answer to all of them in the timeframe, but it might. Be just enough to kind of spark a conversation related to that question. I think it could be flexible for what the group wants, but individual people want to bring up and that sort of thing. So yes, but no is my. Answer, Sandy.
Thanks for that clarification.
Would it be possible, maybe this time we could, I know like our group, someone was able to like write the questions down fast enough, but. Maybe we could leave them up for a minute or two and let people think about them before we go into the breakout session so that when they go in, they kind of. Maybe want to speak to them and then if. People aren't, you know, initiating on their own, we could go down, would that be something that might work?
Yeah, you know, I'll, we can do, we could do that, but I think I can. I could technically message all the groups, all five questions.
Okay.
So they could see it in their chat, you know what I'm saying, so. That would probably help and.
Yeah.
Trying to get, you know, five, six different people to share screens and, you know, do all that kind of stuff. I'll have to do a quick test and I'm pretty sure I can do it.
I think that would be great, thank you.
Would we be able to post those questions on the website for the city website? You know. Ahead of time, that way they would have.
That's a good idea.
Maybe have some thoughts about that.
Absolutely.
I think that's a great idea, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you.
Welcome.
To add on to that, it might be good in between the. Like overview and timeline and the move to breakout sessions to post, like to have them like visible like we've just talked about and then pause for like. One to two minutes and give people time to sit and think about them for a minute and then move into breakout sessions and then start the discussion, so then that way. They've seen them on the website, which I think is a great idea, they, they've seen them, they've had a couple of minutes, they're repeated again in the breakout session. So in theory, that's a lot, that's a decent amount of exposure to those questions before we ask for folks to just like dive right in.
Sure, I had, that's a good idea, we'll both post this on the website, website ahead of time and then we'll. We'll modify the agenda. And add, add a new number three. Review breakout session questions.
Yeah, and then I'll, I'll message it again to the breakout sessions.
Okay.
Mr. Reese, could this also be made into a Facebook event as well and then you, you do the same thing? That you're putting on the website, you put that on there?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then were you guys gonna put signs up again to notify people?
We can do that, Laura and I talked about that briefly and. We just, we just didn't resolve it, but if, if that's your desire, we can certainly do that. And. What I think we want to do is. Is. We may have to order some new signs, but is. Be able to use these signs and modify them slightly for other events, you know. So. If you, if you think that's something that, that makes a lot of sense, we can do that.
I think it's helpful, especially if they're in places like parks where people are sort of hanging out and they may see them. You know, I think you could probably like do a sticker, like if it's a date, if you do town hall, you know, and then you can always. Sticker over a date or something, I've done that before with signs, but. Yeah, I mean, I think it's helpful, I think it's a helpful reminder too for people, just keep it on their brain, but.
Yeah, I like it, I like signs.
Not everybody looks on the website all the time, so I think signs do help, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll post those at. You know, parks and city hall and library and other, other places that make sense. Yeah, this is good feedback. Okay, anything, anything else on this?
No, just thank you to you and Councilmember Crossley for the work you guys have done.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And a joint effort, so thank you, I'm gonna take this off the screen here, okay. I'm gonna transition to the next item. Citizen and Business Survey Update. Okay, so kind of high level here, we're about three to four weeks behind, and so let me explain. When. We gave the go-ahead to ETC in the mid-September. They then had to conduct the pre-test of the survey. Design and build the survey, the online survey. And then they had to print the surveys and prepare for initial mail. So that took them a couple of weeks to do. And then they sent the surveys out in late September, early October. There was a three-week delay, three to four weeks delay caused by the post office. There's nothing we could do about that, we just discovered this over the last several days. However, the good news is we're hearing that people are now receiving. So that's the good news, we are about three to four weeks behind. Over the next month or so from today through like November twenty-fifth. We'll get surveys returned and the data, data collection will begin. So we expect to get a lot of surveys returned and also filled out on the website as an option. And then between late November and December twenty-sixth, ETC will. Finish their data collection. At the end of December, they're gonna submit a draft report to Laura Miller and myself. And. The plan is, again, because they're a little bit behind, the plan is either on January twenty-fifth or February eighth. For them to make a final presentation to council. Now I'm gonna push for that January twenty-fifth date. I'm gonna push hard to see if we can make that, since we're behind and see if we can kind of catch up a little bit. We're gonna be getting weekly updates from ETC, Laura and I. Just how things are going and how the return's going. So if there's any, you know, cause for concern or alarm, we can kind of swag it and figure out what we need to do, but. So that's kind of a high-level update and happy to answer any questions or follow-up on items.
I just. I'm sorry, I have a question, I received one of these in the mail. I need a person that lives in the house, so my question to the council and to the mayor and to the city manager. Do I fill this out? I mean, I, I don't know if that would be.
We got one too.
Did you really?
You did too, Sandy?
Sandy did too.
I got one too.
Yeah, my question was how many were mailed out?
Yeah, I'll have to check on that, Councilmember Schmidt, I'm not sure, they, they were, they were, they were sent out randomly to residents.
Yeah, that's why I was just curious what percentage of residents, because that's a lot of us.
Councilmember Crossley, did you give one?
No, but. I might, I could still get one, right?
Yeah, ours came today, ours came today, so.
And Councilmember Falkingham, did you get one?
I did.
I got one too.
Wow, that's, that's a very surprising.
It's lightning strike kind of stuff.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have to share that with, again, Laura's been the point on this, I kind of came in in the middle or latter part of this project, so. You know, I don't know the, the percentage, but the fact that five or six of you got that, that gives me some pause.
I'm seeing two people in the chat saying they got them as well, so.
My, my concern, and, and this may not be a concern, this is just the first thing that I'm thinking about, is everyone on council that received one. Is a homeowner and then the council member that's a renter did not receive. So, so already my wheels are spinning like, so how many of our renters received it? I'm, I'm concerned and maybe I shouldn't be, but.
Well, is it all, are they all registered voters too? I mean, I don't, I don't remember that part because it's been so long.
It shouldn't be.
It wouldn't have been, we would have caught that.
I don't remember if that was part of it.
I don't think it was, because I think it was all like the language of like residents and that sort of thing, I'm. Well, I say it's a good example if you received the survey to finish the survey and turn it back in. I'm choosing not to take it personally that I didn't get one. But yeah, I think we talked a little bit too about like when we were going through this whole process, talked, talked about renter engagement because there's so many. So I'd be curious to kind of see just like the initial breakdown of here's how many we sent out, here's what. Here's kind of where they went and who they went to and that sort of thing. I had a question about. How anonymous the data was, just out of curiosity, if, right, so hypothetically I receive one and I turn it back in, that data I assume. For ETC would be connected to my name and address, but when it was presented to us, it would all be. Compiled together, right, we wouldn't see like an individual list or anything, okay, that makes sense.
Correct, but I, I share the concerns and I will personally get on the phone this week with ETC and. And find out. How many were mailed out, what the percentages of the overall residential population, the, the fact that we have. Five or six council members out of seven that received one and then the whole renter versus homeowner issue.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna have my significant other and other family members fill it out.
Yeah, well, I.
Well, they, they assured us that. It would be, it would be sent out to match demographics, so. Should be, should be half and half, pretty much renters and homeowners.
And among the, and amongst all the wards too, like all wards represented as well, so hopefully that's what happened.
Yeah, I can report back on November ninth, the next meeting.
Okay.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Traxler, item number nineteen.
Old Business, I apologize. Council Communication.
Any communication from the council?
I just had a question, there was one more thing at the end of this, I don't know if that was something. Oh, never mind, that's your report, never mind, sorry.
All right. I, I don't see any council communication, so item number nineteen, Mr., I mean, item number twenty, Mr. Traxler.
Mayor's report?
I just have, just a brief report really about appointments to boards and commissions and then also like the timeline of it. In November, we'll have, from my understanding, after talking with Mr. Reese, we will have one meeting and that's the November ninth. Meeting and then we'll have the town hall, but that's not really our meeting and then we will not have a meeting the week of Thanksgiving. And then December is about the same, we'll have one meeting in December and then we will not have our second meeting because we are really in the thick of. Holiday season, so. After talking with Mr. Reese about that. He, he agreed with me when we're going to, when I'm going to like. Submit names, be ready to submit names to you and, and have a work session where we are discussing appointments, that's, we're looking at January. So I just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that. And then also, just to remind everyone that is in attendance. That if you would like to serve on a board or commission, you are invited to please submit an application and we, we accept applications. Year-round, so you really are, are really never too late, I mean. Even in January, when we're going through the process of like the work session where council will discuss. Recommendations and I'll talk to them about who I'm looking at, you can submit an application right before that work session meeting, so. Just know that we would love to have your support on these boards and commissions and your expertise and. It is volunteer, so all we can say is thank you very much, but we really do appreciate you. And that is my report. Mr. Traxler, item number twenty-one.
City Attorney's Report.
Mayor, I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, and I didn't forget you. Not like last time, girl, all right, item number twenty-two, Mr. Traxler.
City Managers Report.
Yeah, so I have two items, one building on what the mayor just commented on. We did add the Human Services Commission to the, the overall boards and commissions. On the website and on October twenty-first, we. Sent out. On the website, on Facebook and an email blast. The opportunities for the Human Services Commission as well as the four other. Boards and commissions that have vacancies. So I wanted to provide an update on that and. The second item, which was in your packet. I provided a little bit of an update and timeline as it relates to hiring a permanent fire chief and police chief. And there'll be more to the timeline as we engage a consultant, which we just. Circulating an RFP beginning this week. So we can look to interview potential consultants. And come to council either in December or January to approve that, but we are going to this month, I know, I'm sorry, next month. On November seventeenth, which is the day after the Budget Town Hall, on November seventeenth, we're gonna have a listening session. Where the public can weigh in. And provide to the city, to me, and so we can all hear what their priorities would be for a new fire chief. Because we're gonna attack that first and that will be an opportunity where. Really, I get to listen, we all get to listen and. And hear what the public has to say on that and we'll do something. Sometime next year for the police chief as well and probably have a more extended community process for the police chief. So happy to answer any questions on that, but just wanted to highlight those ever, November seventeen, seven to nine over Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Reese, and I just want you to know, I really appreciate you ensuring that the community will be involved in this process. As far as having a voice and you listening, so thank you so much.
Thank you. That's it for my report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Traxler, item number twenty-three.
Public Forum.
At this time, the public is welcome to raise their Zoom hand, so you may be called upon to provide any comment you'd like to give.
Okay, we do have a hand raise. Let's see. Okay. Ms. Killian? Welcome. I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
I have two neighbors who have no presence online either on Facebook. Or how can they get information concerning these town hall meetings and that?
Well, for the Budget Town Hall meeting, I'm sorry, Mayor, did you want to respond?
No, I'm sorry, I just said that was a good question.
Again, for the Budget Town Hall meeting, as we talked about earlier, we are going to post. You know, have signs at key intersections in the parks, at city hall, at the library. And make it as visible as possible that way. In addition to the online and email blast and those kind of things, but open to any other suggestions you may have.
It should also be in the Maple Leaf, right? That was something I had asked for, it'll be. It should also be in the Maple Leaf, right? That was something I had asked for. It'll be in the Maple Leaf.
It is in the Maple Leaf, so every, everyone gets to receive that.
They depend on the Maple Leaf too.
Yeah, thank you, that's worship.
Mister Reese, let me, let me ask this question. Will we receive the Maple Leaf before the budget town hall? Okay. All right, Ms. Killian, did you have any additional questions or statements?
No, I'm fine. I just.
All right.
Worried about my neighbors who didn't participate in anything online.
Oh, yeah, so they wouldn't be able to do it because it is gonna be Zoom. They won't even be able to participate. That's the bad thing. Unless they can have a computer, access to a computer. That's, I think that's an issue with some folks, maybe more than we realize.
Agree, yeah. Um, Holly, just the library is only open till seven, isn't it? I'm just trying to think of access points or where we could, or if we could have at city hall um the ability for people to come, oh, open till eight, that's good, thank you. Uh, I'm just trying to think of spaces, you know, where perhaps we could offer, um and it says they can have up to ten people in their meeting room. That might be some creative problem solving while we're still doing these virtually.
What about city hall, uh the council chamber? I don't know if that would work or not.
We could, I think we could make something work at the city hall. I I, and I say that because um for my inauguration, Mister Traxler made something work at city hall for me, so I think we can make something work.
With it, that would be good if we could.
Do you think that could be an option, Mister Reese? I'm forgive me for trying to, I'm putting you on the spot, forgive me, but.
Oh, that's okay. I think we could figure something out. Definitely, it's definitely worth uh exploring. And so um, just so I'm clear, is this, is this if we get um if we get more interest, or do we wanna, do we wanna set up something proactively?
I mean, I think we should offer it as an option, and then if no one comes, that's okay, but at least we've given people the opportunity that it's there. I mean, I think if we make people tell us, we may not get that, but if they know it's there. And also, they mentioned too, they do have hotspots for rent uh or that you can take out of the library, I think. And so if people have access to a tablet or something, but not the internet, that is an option as well. So.
And I'm just gonna add to that, um, the St. Louis County Library had a like grand pad system as well, um and so I I just want to say that our libraries, Maplewood, the St. Louis County just do a phenomenal job of trying to make sure that uh people that need access to the internet can get it, so um thank you for the information in the chat about the library having hotspots and laptops that that can be rented, and then also there are programs with our St. Louis County Library System as well. But um yes, if we could just figure out, Mister Reese, if you could just tell us how many people could be in the chambers
Sure.
um safely, and then if everyone just understands that they will need to wear a mask um and will be distanced.
Sure.
If used to to meet in person.
Right, and this is for the budget town hall, correct?
Yes.
Right, okay. We do have another person with their hand raised, if I can proceed to that.
Sure.
Yes, Miss Ishmael. Welcome.
Thank you, um, yeah, I just wanted to um add on to the access through the library.
What we, okay.
We lost you for a moment. Miss Ishmael, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
That was my fault, I apologize.
Sabotage. Um, yeah, so maybe there can be um individual signs that address that because these people aren't accessing the internet. So if it's like tiny, tiny on the, you know, city council member meeting, then they may miss it, so maybe there should be another sign put up in parks, or I don't know, how, how, what's the proposal for getting information to people that cannot don't access the uh internet?
Are you, oh, are you saying like the inclusion of the space at uh in chambers or?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
How are you gonna get the data? It, because so much data is put on the internet, how are you gonna get the data to the people that aren't on the internet about that they can be included?
But that, I understand what you're saying, because the sign will just notify people of the meeting, and and so perhaps maybe we could post a sign, or there there are message boards at some of the parks, correct?
Yes, like maybe, because if you have the sign and the little bitty, you know, I mean, only so much is gonna fit on the sign. So, and where are, you know, do you guys know where these people are, I mean? That don't have internet? Like, how can we uh traverse with them? That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think to to answer your question, which I appreciate it, I think what we do is we recognize that we are a community that looks out for each other and takes care of each other. So for example, we had our community member, Mary Killian, come on and say, I have, I have neighbors that don't have access to the internet, so what do they need to do? And so now that we know that, um we're, we're, we are doing things to make sure that we can get the information to them. So I think we just need to continue to hear from our neighbors and and small business owners, businesses, just let us know what the need is, um because I don't think that we have any information that tells us like which specific house doesn't have access to the internet. Um, I know that the Maplewood Richmond High School District does a good job uh collecting that data, but that's really because of the focus is solely on the student to make sure that they have access to getting their work done. Um but if if you're not in the MRH School District and you're an adult, then we really don't know unless we're told. So if um if our community members can get the word out, let us know what what the need is throughout the community, then we'll definitely come up with solutions.
I know the last time we posted signs for the town hall, um Public Works posted them in very um various locations throughout the community, very high-traffic locations um in front of city hall. So um, so I think that, you know, having uh some appropriate information on the signs, for instance, you know, call city hall for more information or something along those lines. Um, on that, uh if we're creating new signs or creating stickers, um directing people to uh to call city hall with the phone number might be appropriate.
Very good, we'll look at it, we'll look at, we'll look at that. I'll huddle with my team this week and we'll, we'll come up with a plan to uh notify people as best as we can.
Yeah, and of course, the um, the, I don't know when the information for the Maple, Maple Leaf has to be to the printer, but.
Yeah, it's already, it's already done, yeah.
We had a a good suggestion um in in the chat, maybe information about the city hall viewing center can be posted in the Maple Leaf. So maybe going forward, um because Ms. Killian said that her neighbors rely upon the Maple Leaf. Maybe going forward, that's just an additional uh piece of information that we put in there, um like data uh like Ms. Ishmael was talking about.
And this is just why I've also noted to increase the number of Maple Leafs back to maybe four, because I do think people really rely on that, so I'll just leave that there, but um.
I I tend to agree that they do, especially the folks without computers or internet access. They really do.
It gives, yeah.
Can you, can you, can you um tell me why you all went, went down in numbers?
Um, you mean uh how many times we put it out?
Right, yes, forgive me, thank you.
It was ca, it was cost-related at the time.
Yeah, at the time it was.
Yeah, it's not, it's not as cheap to print as it used to be, um it's becoming a dying.
But if we can get more people to opt out of the printed version.
Right.
That they probably don't need, then I think you could balance that cost out in.
I agree.
Yeah.
So we just need to have a campaign that's like, if you have access to the internet, please get the Maple Leaf electronically and.
We did, and I think two hundred people opted out the first time, so I think if we keep announcing it, more and more people.
We do have a plan to keep announcing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what Schmitz said, two hundred people have opted out so far approximately, so we'll keep, we'll keep that going. And uh, we did expand the Maple Leaf a number of pages, so it went from ten or twelve pages to now it's like sixteen or something like that. That was a compromise, I guess.
This does bring up the the conversation that we have had, I forget if it was last meeting or or the previous of are we going to be meeting in person at some point um in the future? And how do we combine the online access with the in-person access? So I.
I talked to uh, I talked to Mister Reese about that um yesterday, and I am, I'm now diligently working on trying to find a solution, so um we should be able to do it. It shouldn't be too much I do. I mean, we don't have, we only have one camera. But uh that really should be enough to to, you know, create the Zoom meeting with city hall and then any other members, you know, as panelists to join, and people would still be able to watch you know, online, so or in person.
I think certainly um the the listening session for the fire chief would be a another important um event. But certainly, before we announce listening sessions for the police chief, we definitely have to have a have a handle on how we're gonna be uh as inclusive as possible.
Agreed.
Mister Reese, is there any additional um hands for public comment?
That's it, Mayor Clapper.
All right, thank you. Mister Reese, do we need to have a closed session?
We do know.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for joining us this evening, and thank you, council. You all have a great evening.